Dr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mrs. Fano?
Here.
Dr. Modrak?
Here.
Mr. Palma?
Here.
Mr. Petrazino?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport? Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Here.
Let's rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, and the Montville Tap-Into, the board's official newspapers, on January 28, 2024. We today will be welcoming our board members who had successfully won the election. Enclosed in your agenda are the results of that election, and I'm going to start with Dr. Cordellino.
I, Karen Cordellino, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Karen Cordellino, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education and not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19 colon four dash one, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties that in office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I, David Modrak, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, David Modrak, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education. I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19 colon four dash one, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I, Caitlin Smith, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Caitlin Smith, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education and not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19 colon four dash one, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I would like to open the floor to take nominations for president.
I nominate David Modrak.
Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yeah, I did do that. Oh, I vote on it. Okay. Dr. Cordellino, this is on the motion to close nominations.
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry? Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak? Mr. Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazino?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Now, is there any discussion? I'm going to roll call on Dave Modrak as president. Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry? Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak? Mr. Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazino?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open nominations for board vice president.
I'd like to nominate Michelle Zuckerman.
And I would like to not... And I'd like to nominate Joe Daughtry.
Are there any other nominations? The motion to close nominations?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Vote. It's a roll call. Vote on to close nominations? To close nominations?
This is to close nominations?
Close nominations. Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry? Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Mr. Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazino?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
I'd like to open it up for a discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Karen?
So first, I would just like to thank the community for the opportunity to serve another term. The fact that we ran unopposed was very humbling, and I thank the citizens of Montville Township. In support of Ms. Zuckerman's nomination, I served as president of this board for six years. I was elected six times as president of Morris County School Boards Association. I was elected for four years as NJSBA Vice President of Legislation, and I currently serve as the president of New Jersey School Boards Association. I know leadership when I see it, and I see it in spades in Michelle Zuckerman. She has already demonstrated her leadership by effectively serving as the vice president of our board for the past two years. Michelle has demonstrated leadership by her command of the issues facing our district. She can synthesize information and communicate it concisely. She expresses opinions articulately and persuasively, and she contributes positively to the discussion. I applaud the desires of board members to assume leadership. It is not the usual circumstance. However, it should not happen by the ousting of a vice president who has served admirably for the past two years. It's not a good look for the board. It sends the wrong message, and it does not lend itself to a healthy board culture, which we have enjoyed for more than a decade. Some of us have contemplated a rotation of leadership every two years. I have no issue with that, as long as it does not kick out effective leadership. I would be in favor of the status quo now with new leadership in the presidency and vice presidency next year. For these reasons and more, I enthusiastically endorse Michelle Zuckerman for vice president of the board. I hope you'll join me.
Thank you. Other comments?
Can I say something? Karen, thank you for nominating me and for your comments. It would be an honor to serve as vice president of the board for a third year, along with David as president. I respectfully acknowledge that Joe, my board colleague, is interested in the leadership position. However, I would like to respectfully ask for the support of my colleagues for one more term as vice president, the way you supported David for one more term as president, with a collaborative plan for future leadership of the board. I have served this community, school district, and our children faithfully and honorably for over 15 years as president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer of the Cedar Hill, Lizar, and MTHS PTCs, and as a board of education member for the past seven years, and as vice president of the board for the past two. I stand by my unwavering commitment to putting our children first and to understanding and respecting the role of a board of education member. I stand by my service as vice president for the past two years, and again, ask for the support of my colleagues to vote for me to continue in this capacity for another year. Thank you.
Any other comments about the nominees? Seeing none, I'll close discussion and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Cordellino?
On the board, on the vice president.
So you're going to give me a name?
Let me help here. So when your name is called, you'll pick one. Vote for either Michelle or Joe.
Dr. Cordellino?
Michelle Zuckerman.
Mr. Daughtry? Mrs. Fano?
Joseph Daughtry.
Dr. Modrak?
Michelle Zuckerman.
Mr. Palma?
Michelle Zuckerman.
Mr. Petrazino?
Joe Daughtry.
Mr. Rappaport?
Joe Daughtry.
Mrs. Smith?
Joe Daughtry.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Michelle Zuckerman.
Joe Daughtry is the vice president.
Congratulations, Joe.
Okay, moving on then. For the rest of the... We have the adoption of our code of ethics. Typically, what we do is we take turns reading the code of ethics. One person reads A, next person B, then C, D, down the line, and we just go around. Mike Palma, you want to start us?
Sure. But now, starting with my glasses first. Okay, I got it. Okay. A. You will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
You will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
You will confine your board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
You will carry out your responsibility, not to administer the schools, but together with your fellow board members, to see that they are well-run.
You will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board.
You will refuse to surrender your independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
You will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, you will provide accurate information and, in concert with your fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school.
You will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer.
You will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties.
You will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Could I please have a motion to adopt the organization?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions about the approval? Do we have to vote on each one? We don't have to vote on each one?
You can put on them together.
Good, thank you. Okay, any questions about the parliamentary procedures, the bylaws, regulations, policies? On the board meeting schedule, I would like to ask... Can you come back to that? Sure. Sure, we'll prove everything else in.
So, Dave, so the minutes continue should reflect that we're going to separate the board meeting schedules.
Okay, thank you. Okay, in the terms of board committees and liaisons, as we have done in the past, we will withhold assigning members to those committees and liaisons until the next board meeting. In the meantime, I ask my fellow board members to send me an email. Let me know what your preferences are, what you would like to be on, and I will try my best to accommodate your wishes.
David? I have a question. Is it possible for you to send us the times and the days of the meetings, just so in case anyone has conflicts? I don't know. Or would you send you what we're interested in, and then maybe we can get from the administration the days and times?
Generally speaking, the finance meeting occurs right before our closed session. The other ones are more flexible. Typically, they send out a notice to all members, see who's available, when, and then find a common time to meet. So there's a lot of flexibility there. And then the PTC liaisons are set by the PTCs.
Okay. So we can just go to the website and look at generally what their schedule is, then?
If you can't find them, let me know, because I get all the PTC newsletters.
Right.
And so I can share that time with you if you're interested in particular one.
Thanks, Dave. Great.
Okay. School calendar, board secretary, external appointments, and then are there any questions on those? No? Let's have a roll call vote on organizing resolutions without the meeting schedule. We'll vote on that in a second.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Mr. Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazino?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so about the calendar. We used to have two meetings a month for most of the year. We moved it last year to one meeting a month plus an extra one in April to accommodate the budget. There has been talk about maybe we need more meetings because there's a lot to be done. So I want to ask the board what they feel. Do they feel that we are being rushed through our regular meetings? Do they not like the way the once-a-month meetings have been worked? I personally have an issue with all of the backdated approvals that we've had to do. Is that a problem, by the way, Steve, for all those backdated approvals? No? Okay. So does anyone have any questions or comments?
I do. I actually like the once-a-month and the times that we needed twice a month. Of course, we could always call doc... You could always call a second meeting. I feel like I enjoy being there for an hour and a half, seeing the kids perform, getting the business done. You know, for community members, there are times when we'd only have like 20, 25-minute meeting, and staff would have to come out. It's a big thing, and it's kind of was wasted time, I feel like. The administrators, I'm sure, would have other things that they would like to do. I'm fine with the once-a-month. I think it's good. I think it's actually good for the community because they're not what day is this and what week is this. So I'm okay with that, and of course, if we need a second meeting, that's fine as well.
I have a little differing of feeling about it. I have felt since we've gone to once a month that we're not getting as much as we could when we were meeting twice a month. I felt that I feel that I'm not as well-informed when we're... Now that we're at once a month. Meeting twice a month, I felt like the information was, you know, easier to digest. I just felt more informed. I spent most of my board career doing twice a month. I don't mind it. In fact, many school boards do two meetings a month with their first meeting being a work session where they hash things out, and then the second meeting being an action meeting. The action meeting typically is shorter. But my point is I think twice a month better informs board members.
Okay, Mike? Okay, going back a little more history-wise, and I've been there even a little longer than Karen, that when we used to do the two meetings a month, the first meeting being the work session, the second meeting being the action session, I think that was because back then we were arguing a lot about a lot more things we do now. But I think there is a benefit to having two meetings a month, if nothing else, for the reason that we do have a lot of student presentations. We like to have the kids come up here. We like to have presentations to the public. And I'm not hell-bent on having two meetings a month, but I do think that the one meeting a month is a little skimpy. I think if we had to, we wouldn't have to have some of these meetings. We've got three or four presentations. And maybe what we could start doing is scheduling the two meetings a month, and if it comes about that, we're coming before the meeting, and we said, you know, there's no presentations, and there's really nothing that has to be done this meeting, let's put the meeting off. We'll just push everything to the next meeting. But I'd like to see at least some stuff on the schedule. Give us a little more flexibility.
So you would probably be thinking, would you be thinking along lines of maybe four extra meetings a year, then? You know, we could do that as well. Have four meetings, like two in the spring and two in the fall, two extra ones, because the summertime, we are definitely one meeting a month.
Yeah, we've... And I've never had two meetings in the summer. When I was on the board, it was always two meetings a month for every month except July and August. That's kind of the way it was when I was first on the board. And, you know, because I'm not wedded to it, but I do think, you know, one meeting a month, it's spreading us a little thin, and we give places in a spot where maybe we can't give some kids or people the opportunity to be seen and heard that maybe should be.
Yeah, well, your meetings, when you first joined, went till 11, 12, sometimes even 1:00 in the morning.
No, that was a board before I was there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was going to suggest, similar to Dave, what you're saying. I think that why don't we compromise, in effect, and add a couple more back, but not necessarily two every month? And I think it could accomplish what we're looking for on both ends. I feel like that could be a good solution.
I think we're doing good with one meeting a month, but if we had to put two on in the spring and two on the fall, we may look at that.
Okay.
The compromised position.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm not sure where this is coming from exactly. I think we've been rolling just fine with one meeting a month. I enjoy the length of the meetings. I don't think they're too long. In fact, I think they could be longer, and we, you know, there's room to extend them. I really do. I think Tom's weekly emails, you know, the weekly memos that you send us, very informative. I would ask the people that are asking for two meetings, what more do you want to see? Or is it just, you know, getting together in person just ignites more information sharing? I'm just not seeing it.
No, I was just going to say, I don't think it's coming from anywhere in particular. I'm not sure what you mean by that, but I personally feel like I'm not as well-informed as a board member that has to expend taxpayer dollars, has to provide a good education for our students. I just feel I'm really lacking some of that information.
I think it's maybe because we're used to the two meetings a month, but I feel the same way. I feel like Tom, Dr. Gorman's emails are excellent. He answers our questions, forwards it to everybody, the response. I like knowing what we know, and if I felt that I didn't know more, I could always call Tom. I don't know. I just feel like the schools are running excellent, and I don't feel the need to have that second meeting. I mean, that's just my opinion. I feel very comfortable in what we're at, our business administrator, the team. So those are just my thoughts.
Maybe going twice a month would save Tom some phone calls, then.
No, I rarely call him. I rarely do.
Okay. I think we have probably two options here. We can either keep it as is written on here on the agenda, which is once a month, or we go to two more meetings in probably, what, February and March and October, November.
I'm certainly willing to compromise on that.
Okay. So I guess what I'll probably ask then is a vote on which you would rather keep, which you would rather do. One meeting a month as written, or add four extra meetings a year? So...
Just to be clear, which of the months that would have two meetings?
I would think that would be February and March, because we already have an extra meeting in April. May and June are too crowded with the end of school year. And then October, November would be, again, the first Tuesday of the month for the second meeting, or first meeting.
I'm just wondering, would September be more valuable than November?
Well, you run into all types of holidays. Usually, we have a hard time. Even the kids aren't even in school for about as September. Yeah. Sure, why don't you?
Dave, just as far as the when extra meetings would be put in, I would just hold off on that because November's credited with vacation time, so it may not be a productive time to have a meeting. As Karen was alluding to, was the information sharing, understanding what's happening throughout the district. So the extra meeting needs to be scheduled where it's appropriate for that information to come forward, not necessarily based on any specific calendar. So I think Dr. Gorman may have a better idea of exactly which months would be better to have those extra meetings.
So we just gave you a handout, and in anticipation of this discussion, we just came up with some dates, February, March, October, and November. You can see the dates on it in the red on this addendum we gave you, just to have a visual in front of you of what that compromise situation would look like. Again, that's not set in stone, but it just gives you an idea if you wanted to add four more meetings.
And you notice the one in November is the first Tuesday of the month, not the third, which pushes up against Thanksgiving anyway.
But isn't that Election Day, first Tuesday of November?
First Tuesday after the first Monday.
Which is November 4.
This year, this year would be.
Don't we try to stay away? Don't we try to stay away from Election Day?
We could definitely.
So, already, it's, it's a problem. I'm saying November is kind of difficult.
But we can delete.
Just do three, delete November.
Yeah, delete November and do three.
Yeah. I, I would agree with that, at February, March, and October.
Do we, do we have a consensus on that? Does, can I at least ask for a vote on this? Should we close discussion?
So, there's an important reason to pass a resolution tonight. It's not just to let the world know what the calendar is. It's because the statute excuses you from public notice for all the meetings that you notice in your annual notice. Else, you have to publish notice and adjournments separately for every meeting. So, you need to do that now. You actually need to do it by the fifteenth, but you don't have another meeting between now and the fifteenth. So...
You want to hit your buttons, by the way?
Why don't, Mike, pressing the wrong button?
Press it one more time. There you go.
So, I, I think what, if, if this is what you want, somebody should move to substitute the addendum schedule for the schedule that appears on the agenda. Somebody should second that, and then you should vote on it.
So, Dave, I'd like to move to do the substitution schedule, taking out the November meeting. I do think more opportunities for the public, everyone's schedules are crazy today. And I think if we give more opportunities for the public to come, those extra sessions, it's, it's only a good thing in the end. So, I support the addendum minus the November one.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Got some question. Will this produce considerably more work for the administration?
No, it's not necessarily more work in the sense, because we all have to get it done for that one meeting. But, no, we'll, we'll get it done, whatever needs to be done.
Do we all create a personal hardship of any type to have to come out for more meetings? Before, before I say yes on this, I want to make sure.
No, no. If this is the will of the board, no, it doesn't.
Can I ask a question? I, Dr. Gorman, what are your feelings? Because you're saying it's the will of the board. We're not working seven days a week like you guys are.
Right. So, so, just in my two-and-a-half years, so, you had the two meetings a month, and people were asking, can we change the times? Can we change the meetings? And we went to this one. Both of them worked well. The meetings are shorter, as John, you were saying, you know, when we go to twice a month, because we didn't have a lot to do. Karen makes a good point of, you know, you, you're more informed in the sense of, there's more of a flow to every two weeks you, you meeting. Compromise adding three more meetings, we would see how this goes. And we'll just play that out this year. It, it could work.
I, I would just suggest that when we schedule these presentations that the children do and that the community does, I'd still rather see them all packed into one meeting, because I like the community members seeing what the other part of the community is doing. And I think a packed audience is better than, you know, just one group of people, and then they leave, and then we do our business.
Good point.
I, I'd rather see the children not packed in at night. I feel like I lose my, I get tired. I lose my appreciation for the children's hard work. So, I like having, I like limiting the presentations. And I think it helps us, you know, fill our calendar. There's lots, lots of stuff going on in our district that's worthy of board presentations.
There it is. And close discussion and ask for a vote. Please, the vote is, would you like to substitute the addendum for what's in the schedule, right?
No. The vote, the vote is to approve the addendum as the schedule.
Okay.
Minus.
Minus the November 4th. Okay, there we go. There's your wording.
Ms. Zuckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Petrazino.
No.
Dr. Cordellino.
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry.
Yes.
Mrs. Fano.
No.
Dr. Modrak.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
So, adopted. Okay, moving on. Finance resolutions. Does anyone have, I need a motion for, to adopt the finance resolutions?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Anyone have a concern about our banking institutions, accounts, investment wires, payments, tax, petty cash, et cetera, et cetera? Professional services, anything on professional services? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazino?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. A motion to adopt our curriculum resolutions?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on the curriculum and textbooks? Okay, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazino?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
So concludes the organization. And on to the regular meeting. Superintendent's report.
Business administrator's report?
No report.
There are no committee reports tonight. I invite the public to come up and give us their comments in our first public particip, yeah, first public participation section. We only, yeah, we have two. We have two. This would be for anything on the agenda. I don't think...
Is this about Mandarin or?
Wait, wait, yeah. We have, we have one more public. Okay, so this would be on anything here, on the approval of the superintendent's contract, a couple field trips. That's really about it. Roll call vote, please.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazino?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Okay, no close session. Are there, is there any old business, new business, or general board comments?
I, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, which you, you may or may not know, and particularly for the administration, that with the closing of so many, or with so many newspapers not doing print anymore and moving digitally, there was a concern about how were boards going to advertise their meetings and put out to the public documents that the public needs to see. And they wanted to be sure that it could be done digitally. So, in fact, the governor did sign a law that allows, at least until March, school districts to put their public information in their normal newspaper, but it'll be digital. And the second thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention was, for the first time this past budget, the state fiscal year 225 fully funds the school aid formula under the School Funding Reform Act, completing a seven-year transition. The Department of Education is beginning to review the school funding formula and invites the public to participate. So, one of the dates was December 17th, but there's another one tomorrow down in Somerville. So, the January 18th, 14th, and 16th. And anyone who wants these dates, I'll be happy to share.
Will you be going down there?
I'm, I'm going to the Department of Education tomorrow, actually.
Okay, good. And will you be sending a letter or making any comments?
Letters are accepted. And if you want to speak at any of these hearings, you do have to register.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah.
Through our organizations or professional organizations, we do make our voices known. If the board decided they wanted to do something on their own, you could also write a letter and, and voice your opinion or something like that.
Thank you. Okay, any other board comments?
I do. I just wanted to welcome Caitlin to the board. Welcome to the hood. And Dr. Gorman, I have a question for you. I'm getting this question. It was like on my way here. Governor Murphy signed a bill saying that now there is less restrictions or now those who want to become teachers because of the shortage of teachers now don't have to take certain tests. Can you talk about that? And is that going to be a case for Montville Township?
Yeah, I, I don't have everything in front of me, so I don't want to misspeak. So, maybe at the 21st, I could give you some more information about that.
Thanks.
Will it affect us? Hopefully, it'll affect us in the positive, you know, that we'll be able to get more teachers. But there's been a lot of changes. And even with the retirement, people coming out, it hasn't, it hasn't been a big blip with the incentive so far. But hopefully, that will start changing things. But remember, you have to, you're talking about people that are in the pipeline. So, you might not see these changes for four years when kids decide to go to college and then choose their career path. But I'll get some more information for you for the 21st.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
My understanding is that the content part isn't eliminated in just one of the tests after talking to my wife, who's a teacher.
Oh, good. Okay, thanks, John.
I don't know if that, hell, I don't know the details, but.
No other comment?
I'd say a couple. First of all, congratulations to Joe. Second of all, congratulations to Caitlin. And third of all, Michelle, thank you for your outstanding service as vice president. I guess just a couple of thoughts. I've been here since, it'll be 20 years in April, and this is the first time we've ever actually had a contested election for either president or vice president in public. And, you know, this is a wonderful board. We have nine wonderful people on this board. It's a great functioning board. It will continue to be a great functioning board. I think either candidate would have been an excellent choice. And I voted for Michelle because, as I always say, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. We're running very well as it was. But I have every reason I think we're going to. And I would also don't want anybody in the public to in any way think that a vote against Michelle is a lack of confidence in her or a, I think, a reason to oust her. I take it at Joe's word. It was simply a matter of Joe wanting to seek a leadership position as he has the right to do, obviously. And we're going to support Joe, just as we supported Michelle. But again, I have every expectation this board is continuing to function. This will not be a distraction of any type whatsoever. And Michelle is going to continue to do an outstanding job as a board member, just as she has done for all these years. You're a great board member and a great friend, Michelle. And thank you for all you've done as vice president.
Can I piggyback on what Mike said? You know, while I'm disappointed in the outcome of tonight's leadership vote, I congratulate the new vice president, Joe Daughtry, and the returning president, Dave Modrak. And I personally will continue to work hard to maintain the legacy of the board, which is that of an effective, student-focused body that understands its role.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other comments, I would invite the public up for the second public participation section on any topic that they wish to speak on. And could you please provide your name, address?
Yes, of course. My name is Ying. I live on 7 Boyertown Road in Montville. I've been a very long-term Montville resident. And I think everybody knows I'm here to talk about the Mandarin program. So, first of all, congratulations to Caitlin. And this is only actually my second time attending the BOE meeting. So, I'm actually really amazed at what you guys do. I think it's a lot of great work that you're really helping the kids in Montville Township. So, I'm here to specifically talk about the Mandarin program. And I think we have actually students coming up later to tell you the, the board specifically a little bit more about how they have benefited from the Mandarin program and how devastated they were when they heard the news from the district in terms of canceling the program. So, for me, my specific question is really just trying to understand one thing and one thing only, so that we do not run into this situation down the road. If, you know, maybe Mr. Gorman and the, the board can help me understand ultimately how was this decision made in the first place? And how was it reversed so quickly within the month?
Yeah, so this is board comments. You'll make them. And then when we close it all, then I'll answer the questions that you may have.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. So, my name is Cipio Han. I live at 57 James Ridge Road, and I'm a senior at Montville Township High School. Firstly, congratulations to the returning and the new board members. I'll say this feels familiar. I feel like I've stood up here before, although I'll say I haven't done this since last year. Don't know how funny that joke was, but not further ado, Happy New Year. Hope everyone's well. So, I'd like to continue with some of the previous comments made about the Mandarin program. And specifically, I want to talk about my story and how I think it's really benefited me and, you know, what I think about this whole situation and what we can do moving forward. So, my personal story, I come from a family, I was born, raised to speak Mandarin and English at home, becoming bilingual in the two languages. So, going into middle school and high school when I was in the process of making my world language elections, I discussed this with my family, they ultimately decided that they wanted me to, and I also thought this, I also thought this would be beneficial for me to take a language other than Mandarin so that I could, for one, learn another language. And then the other more long-term thought we had was that if I, my last name being Han, was obviously a very, is obviously a Chinese last name, when I applied to colleges, if I, if they see Mandarin on my transcript, then it could be potentially, you know, they could think, the college admissions officers could think that I'm using, you know, this course to take, to take advantage, get an easy A. So, that's sort of the pretext behind why I chose Spanish as my world language. Regardless, because of the such robust Mandarin program we have had at the Montville Township High School and Middle School, I've been able to, with the help of Mrs. Huang, participate every single year and lead several performances, presentations at the annual Lunar New Year Showcase, on top of doing other cultural activities, sharing what I'm passionate about my heritage through ways such as the bulletin board, cultural, like little contests we have throughout the school, many other, many things more. And what I want to reflect on is, while I'm certainly very ecstatic that this program is back, I'm certain, I'm certain many of my classmates, many community members are as well, I think something important is to reflect and understand what the root cause of the problem was and to target the root cause. Because I think that's what will set us up for long-term success in terms of keeping a diverse community setting. So, tracing back to the main reason for the phase out of the program being low enrollment, I wanted to mainly make some comments regarding solutions we could propose to low enrollment. The first one being to, in a general sense, make learning the language appealing to students of all levels, whether it's students who are advanced in Mandarin, like myself and some of my friends. We may benefit from certain things like independent studies that are, you know, beyond, for example, DAP level. And one example I want to give, next week on the 14th, one of our presentations, one of the performances, is going to be a emulation of marriage ceremonies in, from ancient China. It's going to be based on a piece of ancient Chinese literature called, it's in Chinese, it's called Dongjing Menghua Lu. And what essentially I've been able to do is, you know, I, you know, I learned Mandarin through home. You know, my mom and dad teach me many traditions. What I've essentially been able to do through learning this tradition at home is, in a sense, independently study the culture and create a transcription of things that were based in ancient times, in ancient Chinese history, and translate them essentially to what we can understand now in the modern time. So, that's one example of something I think an independent study Mandarin class could do, go on to the deeper level of culture, examine things from, you know, very, from thousands of years. Because ancient Chinese history is so rich. It goes back thousands of years to around, you know, 1600 B.C. and even earlier. is so rich. It goes back thousands of years to around 1600 B.C. and even earlier. And I think the second suggestion I would want to make to promote learning Mandarin and make the language learning appealing to students of all levels would be a promotion at the middle school, particularly to sixth graders who are entering their course selection as they go into seventh grade and beyond. An example, I think, we could start at the simple level, is to, for example, maybe just show a video in all the homerooms, in all the sixth grade homerooms, of some of the Mandarin performances and some of the great things we do up here. And in the long term, we could, you know, we can maybe even have field trips. For example, last June, I had the privilege to attend the elementary tour for the orchestra and band, where we went to all five of the elementary schools and performed for the elementary school students who were preparing to make their music and art selections for the fourth and fifth grade. I think we could do something similar in the long run. It might be difficult this year with the given timeframe, but I think in the future, this could be certainly something we do with the Mandarin program to, again, push the language, push learning the language and make it more appealing to students of all levels. So that was the main thing. Those were the main things I wanted to talk about. And again, thank you very much for your reconsideration throughout this decision, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about anything off the agenda? If so, come up. And then your name and address.
Hello, everyone. Congratulations to the new board member and also the president and vice president. My name is Lu Han. I am a resident, longtime resident in Montville. My address is 20 Ridge Drive, Montville, and I work for Newark Board, actually. So I am echoing my colleagues and my friends, and though they talk about the importance of Mandarin program in this district, and I want to talk about some data, just because I am a data analyst and I work, this is my profession. So I want to talk about data in general and why we need to keep the program moving forward. Because in this district, we have about almost 20% Asian, and one out of eight is Chinese. And we have a large group that represents people who are speaking the language. We also have a huge amount of interest. So when we talk about closing the program, we want to make sure there is enough evidence why we are closing the program. And there should be enough communication sending out to the community why this program is not offering the benefit at the cost, at the minimum cost of two teachers. We're talking about two teachers in general. And I've also looked at all the enrollments I have requested from the NJDOE of the historical enrollment across the board for all the other districts who have offered Mandarin program. Our ratio of enrollment over the entire population is not low at all. We are at the higher end. If any one of you are interested in knowing the data, I can share that. I have done the analysis. I can happily share that data with you. So in a nutshell, our enrollment is not low, and it's very comparable to other school districts who have offered the program. And in the diverse, in a becoming diverse, more and more diverse school district, we're all seeing all the other school districts not only opening more programs, like my district, who I work for, Newark, they have offered several other programs at several other schools for the Mandarin program. They also have one school designated for Mandarin and Arabic, just for the two languages. So I want to urge the board to consider this program very seriously moving forward in this kind of, you know, very international, very diverse community. And we really appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? If so, come up to the microphone. And your name and address, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Romaine Chan. I live in 19 Bromley Road, Montville. And also, I'm a middle school teacher, as Andrew Casey and Dr. Gorman knows. I'm not here to talk about Chinese program. I'm here to support Chinese program. And I think my husband's ear is burning right now. So it's like, he doesn't want me to talk in public, but he doesn't want any trouble. So I just have one quick question, because I heard the board is discussing about the once-a-month board meeting. I'm a middle school teacher. I planned for my class trip every single year. It concerns my, you know, my teaching job. So I remember we need to submit the field trip plans 60 days before the actual trip happens. So that was before board had the twice meeting a month. So I'm wondering, because this year, middle school does not have that many trips, okay? So, and I can't do my trip this year. But if the teachers want to do the trip, so how many days in advance, okay, the teacher has to put in the application to the board? Because when you have meeting twice a month, we can put an application in 60 days in advance. Does that mean we have to put in the trip like two, three months, four months in advance? So that's my just question, a simple question. I do not want the board to have extra meetings for nothing. But, and I just don't want the teachers who go out of the ways, go so much trouble to plan the trip, and they have to do actual work. So that's my single concern today. So if somebody can answer my question and answer probably a lot of the teachers' question, that'd be great. Thank you very much. Oh, by the way, congratulations for new member and president and vice president for the board. Thank you very much.
Tom, you'll answer at the end. Take care at the end. Okay, any other questions or comments? And then your name and address. Thank you.
My name's Robert Bain, 216 Brook Valley Road. Dr. Gorman, you and I exchanged emails before Christmas. I said I'd come before the board. I came before the board about four years ago. This is regarding busing and the safety of our students. I have seen an uptick personally of narcissistic drivers going around our buses. It's been a problem, and it is increasing. The police department did come to my home yesterday morning, I guess at your suggestion. They, you know, watched traffic. It doesn't happen every day. It doesn't happen every week, but it does happen, and it happens more often. Now, our officers in town have body cameras, and they have cameras plastered all over their cars, internal and external. I implore the board to please require onboard cameras for all buses in the township when you go to renew the contract with the busing companies. That's it. I want to prosecute these people who go around school buses. If our cops can wear body cameras as grown adults, I think someone needs to review and oversee the safety of six-year-olds getting on and off school buses. That's it.
Thank you. Were there any other comments from the public? If so, come up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cynthia Daly, and I am the president of our school's Chinese Auto Society.
Cynthia, the microphone.
Hello, my bad. Hello, my name is Cynthia, and I am our school's Chinese Auto Society president and a current AP student. I'm with my vice president, and we're here to discuss the benefits of our program, our achievements, and our plans for the future. To start, Mandarin is the most spoken language in the world, and is also one of the six languages the United Nations speaks, uses. Mandarin is consistently ranked as one of the hardest languages to learn. So when a Mandarin student has it on their transcript, it makes their application more competitive. Now, heading over to my vice president.
So thank you so much, Cynthia. Now, I'm just going to go over some of the key points that were used for the previous planned removal of the Mandarin program. And these are some really good counterexamples that we have found by just going around the community and asking parents and students. So one of the counterexamples that were brought up were if the low enrollment in classes is what warranted the ending of the curriculum originally, there's also the high-level math courses and high-level classes such as, for example, AP Physics C, Mechanics, or E and M with lower enrollment. And they should, by the same logic, also be canceled. We also touched upon the budgeting issue that was cited, and that was put off as just, it's just a significant declines and fluctuations in student enrollment that happens year to year. So logically, that shouldn't be a valid reason why Mandarin program should be removed. The difficulty and rigor of the Mandarin curriculum also makes student applications look more competitive, as touched upon by a previous speaker from the public, Sipio Han. And finally, I want to touch upon additionally that languages such as the Spanish program are taught earlier at the elementary school. And from a young age, this really helps them raise their percentage of student enrollment. And that is something that puts the Mandarin program at a disadvantage. Obviously, that's very good for the Spanish program. I just want to thank all the community support that we got on our petition that we sent out on change.org with the help of Sophie Matarri. So thanks to her and the entire community in Montville Township. We were able to get an amazing 1,200,000 signatures, along with hundreds of heartfelt comments and even videos, just people voicing their concern and wanting the Mandarin program to be here to stay, because it really helps Montville Township public schools be a lot better. And there's also social media support that we get received on Instagram, Facebook. There was a Facebook Parents Group that really helped out, and also on WeChat and WhatsApp. So all these platforms really helped us. And I just want to give them a shout out, because they helped. All right, now handing back to Cynthia.
So looking for the future, we have two new Chinese classes. The first one is Chinese Culture and Arts, and the second one is the Chinese Business Program. The first class is a class taught in English, and it's targeted towards non-Mandarin students. And it helps them learn more about the Chinese culture, traditional foods, arts, music, and dance without committing to learning the whole language. And there's also a business program that...
Okay, thanks, Cynthia. I'll touch upon that. So in this business program, it's going to be offered to people with prior Mandarin experience, but they only really need one year of experience, so that can be fulfilled by Mandarin III or Mandarin IV. And it's open to grades 10 to 12, and it's planned to have five credits. This basically will open up doors for Montville students, as it'll teach them important, it will teach them both Mandarin language as well as useful etiquette in business settings. And the goal is for them to gain insight into Chinese business etiquette and practices. So I'll also give a really good example of what this is going to look like. So it's going to prepare them for real-world business settings, skill development, and cultural insight, which is very important for a rapidly globalized world with a lot of international trade going on and things going digital. So that's really good. And it boosts students' college apps because, first of all, it's going to be an honors-level course. And we are also working with Mr. Xia, who has a business degree, and he's going to help us with this course so that it will become a official financial aid, oh, no, financial literacy. Financial literacy, it fulfills the requirement, because we can't graduate until we get that fulfilled. So originally, there were only two courses, or types of courses, I'm sorry, that allowed this. They include, surprise, surprise, financial literacy, and also the economics courses, including AP Econ.
Thank you very much.
And, yeah, it really helps to develop skills to excel in the global job market.
Thank you.
Oh, we have one more thing to say.
Okay.
Make it quick, okay?
Yes, please. Thanks, Cynthia.
All right. So I'd like to talk to you guys about the year of the snake, a symbol of wisdom and elegance. In Chinese culture, a snake is a reverent symbol of intelligence, grace, and transformation. People born in the year of snake are believed to possess a keen intuition, wisdom, and ability to adapt with change and determination. So I would like to thank you all for deciding to keep the Mandarin program, to show our gratitude we've prepared...
You brought a snake. Thank you.
Yes.
Wonderful.
I was actually born in the year of the pig. Anyway, we have prepared little gift bags, and inside...
Just leave them right there.
It's a gift, and also an invitation to our annual Chinese New Year showcase that takes place next week. Mission is free, and I hope to see you all there. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thanks, Cynthia. Okay. Thank you very much.
They already got what they want.
More presents. Oh, wow. Is that for Tom, the big one? Okay. Are there any other comments? Okay, one more.
Oh, in case you're wondering why the packages are a little different, they all contain the same thing.
I'm sorry. You wanted to make comments? Your name and address.
Hi, how are you, board members? Happy new year. Old Montville resident. I'm here to tell a story. I live in 16 Nathan Drive. My name is Ming Shae.
Name and address real quick.
Yeah, my name is Michael Shae. I live in 16 Nathan Drive.
Thank you very much.
Okay, tell your story. I was with Bell Labs for more than a decade, and very interesting, you know, very proud of. I actually worked with Mr. Rappaport's wife, you know, Arena, coworker, intellectual property of the Bell Labs. On the beginning of 2000, Huawei, they don't have that many patents. So we have, you know, negotiation with them. Nowadays, they are very strong, right? So their patents, low quality, but a lot of number. Nowadays, they purchase a lot of patents, build their portfolio, right, try to be stronger. At that time, I was the only person I knew the Chinese language in the intellectual property in the Bell Labs. So tons of documents, you know, the patents are always in English, but their reverse engineering, their patent, you know, the royalty analysis involve a lot of Chinese documents. It was very, very helpful. I know the language. So I just want to say, as an educator, right, or the people here, my thinking is for this thing, you saw the program, Chinese program was eliminated, then reversed, right? It's quite a, you know, shock wave in the Chinese community. But my thinking is, if we base on whether we want to, you know, select a form or go ahead with the form, but just only based on enrollment, it may be, you know, not quite well, because talking about the education is always from top to bottom, right? Influence, guidance, instruction, that means you tell your kids how to do it, right? You're not going to tell people, say, my kids say, I want to do this, I want to do that. For example, for example, right, let's pretending, if the math enrollment is very low, are we going to eliminate, you know, the math? No, right? We're going to tell them because, not only because China right now is a superpower, not because here, a lot of, you know, characters, cultural influences here. We also talk about diversity, all the other language, right? But for the Chinese language, for my daughter and myself, right, they all very, you know, benefit from the language. So I just want to, you know, say thank you very much for, you know, reverse and put back the Chinese language. Also, hopefully, hopefully, right, we're going to have in the future, right, we will have more communication before we make a decision. All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the public participation section. And unless there's other comments from, you want to make comments on, yeah?
So just to address some of the comments that people made...
So just to address some of the comments that people made tonight. First of all, we appreciate all the feedback. The board takes everything you say very seriously. I'm just going to go in reverse order about the busing incident. I'm glad the police came to you and talked to you. It's great to see it happening so quickly. And so we are talking to them. We gave them many of the routes for them to take a look at, your streets as well as other streets, and we're hoping that, you know, this will be a reduction in some of the incidents that you do see. And your suggestion is something that we could look into in the future when we do the bus routes, if we open up the contracts to the future, about what they could do with cameras on the bus or not. But that is, that's a complicated process with the busing companies, but that's something we will look into if that can be an option. Regarding the field trips, right now, it's going to stay at the 60 days, what you need to do for teachers to submit. However, I will talk to Ms. Woodring, and we'll take a look at that, because the board only added three new more board meetings. So we'll see how that affects things, and of course, we'll let all the teachers know about the field trips and how that whole process works. And regarding Mandarin, right now, we're starting the process for next year's budget. We do, we start that January, going into February, and then we present the actual budget, you know, and you'll see on the board meetings, April, we have two meetings in April about that. So we look at the facilities needs, we look at the maintenance needs, we look at the personnel, we look at all these different things, and we, as we determine the budget for the following school year. Each year, we add and reduce teachers based on the needs, based on the curriculum, based on the state law, based on special education law, and all these things come into this whole factor of what makes up our whole budget, and that's how we make these determinations. So, you know, for instance, at the elementary level, you know, the enrollment of the kindergarten classes determines whether I need a teacher at the elementary level for kindergarten, or that teacher moves up, or if there's a reduction, and we move personnel around based on those things. Mandarin happens to be an elective as opposed to a core requirement by the state, so that is, you know, determined by the demand of the students. So the board made a decision after hearing from the community and weighing the cultural impact upon the benefits in the school district, as well as the students that were coming forth and doing that, the offering an Asian language, that we have all the other romantic languages being offered, and a number of other factors, including some of these ideas that the students came forward and started sharing with us about how we could grow the program. All these factors came together, and that's when the board decided to keep Mandarin and try to help promote it over the next couple of years and see how it grows. So that's where we are right now. We're happy that Mandarin's sticking around, and we're hoping that students are going to be signing up for the class. Right now, it's, it's an open enrollment for the students at the middle school and the high school levels, so hopefully we'll see the enrollment increase over the next couple of years. And we'll be staying in touch with the community as well about decisions about Mandarin in the future. But for right now, we're looking pretty good with Mandarin, and we're happy to have it still on the books. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I guess I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.